Historic Town Center District. With respect to Chapter Six in the R1 and R2 districts, we simplified the language pertaining to alternate energy facilities as permitted accessory buildings and structures, and alternative energy uses as a permitted accessory use. We amended the language to allow accessory structures, but not pools and accessory buildings, to be closer to a permanent school building than they're currently permitted, which is 15 feet. We're reducing that down to five feet. amended language regarding setbacks for fencing, because fencing six, the B1, B2, and the newly formed B3 districts. We expanded conditional uses in the B2 district to include automobile service stations and outdoor recreation. We removed dwelling units above the first floor as a conditional use within the B2 district. That's the B2 district along West 130th and Bellis Road, because remember, Town Center will become the B3. We removed hospitals, medical clinics, urgent care facilities, ambulance and emergency medical services as a conditional use within the newly formed B3 district. So we would be taking away some available uses within the B3 district, once it's formed. Chapter Seven, we amended the timing for payment of a fee for our conditional zoning certificate. We added a section pertaining to voluntary discontinuance of a conditional use for continuous period of two years or longer. It will constitute voluntary abandonment. With respect to Chapter Eleven, we clarified that a final site plan is required for all proposed subdivisions and planned or industrial developments following review and approval of a preliminary site plan and all conditional uses in a business or industrial district. We also clarified that Section 11.7 pertains to preliminary site plans. In Chapter Eighteen, we've removed the labeling, securing, and screening requirements for solar arrays and wind energy facilities. So with that, I will turn it over to the public for any comments that you might have. I do suggest, well, I do request that if you do have something to say, that when you approach the podium, you speak and say your name and address for the record. So is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I'll try to get this. Good evening. I'm Darren Dowd. I'm an attorney, and I represent the property owner whose property is being proposed to be changed from a B1 district to an R1, and that property owner is Hinckley Properties Incorporated, and they do business as Buzzard Cove. We previously submitted to the board a written opposition to this changed amendment, reclassifying it from a B1 to an R1 district. We would request that that become part of the permanent record for this hearing. Additionally, I'd like to just reiterate some of the items that were in that letter. Essentially, this property's been operating as a business driving range miniature golf, and more recently, pizzeria for about 30, a little over 30 years as a business one district. This area of land has always been B1, as far as I can recall. As long as my client has owned the property, it's been a B1. Transferring and converting this over to an R1 district would place him into a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use, which would basically limit his ability to run that business, modify that business, change with the market in terms of what he can offer. He's limited to expanding that business by a 10% square footage, whereas compared to the other parcels within this area, which are currently used to single-family residences, the burden on them as a non-conforming use in the B1 district isn't as onerous as to an actual operating business who's constantly having to innovate for market demands, change offerings. They provide, you know, great service in the summertime. Most recently, the manager's been able to operate a pizzeria, obtain a liquor permit so he could service his guests better. Additionally, if this property were converted over to a residential district, you saw on the map previously, the riparian setbacks. Basically, makes this property useless for multiple residential development in terms of how many lots could actually be subdivided out of it. He probably, could probably be turned into one or two lots, which is just not an economical feasibility for what this property really is truly beneficial for, which is operating this business. Currently, the property is run on well, on septic. I don't see that this property is conducive to large development. There's no public water, no public sewer that it can tap into. This property, as its existing use, with chances to renovate it, operate it, maybe change the use a little bit to something, but they're not going to be able to build any type of large-scale business on there without water and sewer. So again, Hinckley Properties Inc. opposes the change to the amendment, doesn't see a compelling reason for it, given the number of parcels involved and the existence that the residential parcels have been legal non-conforming for 30-plus years. You're basically going to flip-flop a non-conforming use to the business operator and the single-family residences there, which is basically going to tie his hands in any future development that he may want to do with that business. So to that end, continuing as a B1 district on those parcels is beneficial to the township, and submit the letter that we previously provided to be part of the record of the hearing today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Lightner. I live at 1675 Hinckley Hills Road. I have been a Hinckley resident for the past 34 years. I did submit a letter, and I noticed there's a type. I did 30 years, but it's been 34. So this property was zoned, as it is today, the B1, for light commercial and was a major factor in the purchase of this property in 1988. I do have a pole barn on the property, and at one time, it did house a small business. And it is my intention to create another small business there out of that building, under the current zoning. I have officially retired, and it was my plan to move forward, part of my retirement plan. So this notice has raised many concerns for myself. It's a little confusing and very stressful, I might add, to try and pull all of this together. But I feel that the questions and concerns for myself are that my property could be negatively affected by this amendment. You don't, changing it from the B1 to the R1 would probably limit myself or limit maybe a future sale, you know, the value. So I'm not sure how this would affect my property, the value, or my taxes, for that matter. So I guess I'm just, I just don't understand the reasoning for the change. Gentlemen said it's just, it's just been there as it is, especially with Buzzard Cove. I don't know how it's beneficial to the township or to myself or my property. So I also, as, I don't know what this is going to look like. What the reasoning, like in 10 years? Is this going to be zoned for residential, single-family homes to be put on the other, if that's a future possibility? Or is it paving the way for larger development? I don't know. I guess I just, there's so many questions that I have that I just don't even know where to get all of the answers from. So again, with the water, we don't have water sewer. It's my understanding that we're never going to have that on Hinckley Hills Road. So I'm just not sure where the, what's compelling this? What's the change? Why is the change necessary? I can understand in the other business districts, some of the changes, but here, I don't know why. And I'd like to continue to use my property in the way that I have and for my future plans also. So I hope you'll take all of these questions, concerns into consideration.
May I ask you a question? I think that you have two parcels.
Yes, I do.
Is the pole barn on the same parcel as your home, or is it on?
No, it's on a separate parcel.
Okay, because you could not use, have the business probably on the same parcel as your home.
Right.
That's why I'm asking.
Right, no, it's two parcels. Yeah, no, it's two.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please.
Do you want my name or anything?
Damon.
Julie Mainzer, 1727 Hinckley Hills Road. Okay, I would just like to state that we have been residents for over 26 years. We're very active and involved in our, you know, small-town, big hearts. Purchased this property because it was zoned B1 and have future plans for this property. We raised our family there, but we're getting close to retirement, and we have, we purchased this fully knowing it was zoned this. Also, given the fact that we are neighbors to Buzzard Cove, we have a very unique situation. And basically, changing the zoning or changing, you know, how it is zoned is going to be, it's very, it's going to adversely affect us. It's going to the value of our property. So I would like you guys to take that into consideration. We did not receive notice until Wednesday, so we did try to make some phone calls to get some additional information to come back to you guys with some concrete number, you know, a full appraisal of how this is going to have an impact on us. So I mean, I don't know what your timeframe is moving forward. I know you said the planning commission.
Second, correct.
What is the procedure? Or do you want additional information? Or how is that? How can we truly express to you how much of a hardship this is going to be for us? And what are you looking for?
We love any information that you want to provide to us. So the planning commission will hear it on November 2nd. We will very likely tonight have a motion to continue this public hearing until November 3rd, because we need to have the conclusion of the comments from the planning commission before we can proceed. So we will have those by our November 3rd meeting. So you're welcome to come back at the public hearing on November 3rd and speak again, assuming that we motioned and the motion's approved for a public 3rd hearing. And so that will provide the public hearing portion of our discussion. And then it will also still go before the township trustees, and you'll have another public hearing before that. So there's lots of opportunities still to provide any information that you would like to provide to us. I thought that this was very interesting, that we have two presently residential homeowners that are suggesting that they would like to retain their property in a non-conforming use, because I think most residential, you know, most residences would not want to be non-conforming, because there are restrictions on what you can do. So to hear not only from Buzzard's Cove, but also from two residents that say that they would like to keep it is very telling to me. I do have a question for you. Mind thinking into the future, what sorts of businesses do you use to do?
Well, obviously, low traffic. We wouldn't even, no. Oh. Be basically, just off the top of my head, because my husband and I were kind of troubleshooting what our goals and what we would like to do, some type of potential deliver, for example, or things like that. So where we would just store the stuff, have inventory available on a website, where somebody could just select what they want, and we could deliver and set up what they need. So we want to minimize anybody coming onto the property, just have basically an office for storage.
The reason that I'm asking is, so what brought us to this, you know, this path that we're on is, we start to look at that district. And it's currently a B1 district, which is, and really, when you look at that, it's 17 acres. It's isolated in a residential traffic business district within that area. And so several different proposals were proposed, and one of them was adding a new business district there as well and creating more of an outdoor recreational-type district. But one of the challenges to this district is when you look at the parcels, some of the parcels are very small. I think they go down to .6 acres. And so what we need to do is make sure that if we do craft it as a business district, that we're still allowing some uses that provide meaningful uses for those lots. And so that's why I was asking you, what do you foresee? So if we decide not to pursue.
Well, the thing is, you know, given the fact that, you know, we're on well water and septic and stuff like that, we have natural restrictions. But also respecting the fact that we do live next to residential, have that taken into consideration, where you wouldn't want excessive lighting to interfere or noise or sound, because that's, that area, it echoes a lot, sound travels. So, you know, and my neighbor and I, I mean, we've been here a long time, so you know what I mean? I don't think we would want to do anything detrimental to the township. So I fully, you know, we don't really, I've got five years to go before retirement, so I've got time yet to how we're going to manage it and make it happen. But, you know, I mean, who knows what the future holds? I just, I would hate to think that we've put all this time into it, knowing that we need to, you know.
Sure. Thank you very much.
So what additional?
Interested in Ms. Lightner's comments? You know, if you could ask the same questions, that's the other.
Recording in progress.
We like it. I really don't want a lot of strangers coming in and out and on my property, you know, just to buy some treats. So my goal is to sell them, you know, at farmer's markets and things like that, so.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mr. Trump.
That comply with the existing regulations for businesses, and to develop those three properties would require, I guess, a variance. For instance, the half acre is not big enough for a business, according to the current regulations. Is that correct, Marcus?
I think that's correct.
There is a minimum size and minimum frontage.
Right, but some of those are larger than the current business district B3. So either that, look. Do any of you know what the top of here is? The setbacks? 75 from the road. Now, the total square footage.
Look at the perimeter and square footage for B1.
B1 is 30,000. Is that a half? Two-thirds?
Forty-three thousand, I think it's.
So they'd have to get a variance anyway.
I don't think so. And some of them do not have the frontage that's required for a business.
Thank you. I guess, can I further that thinking? So are you making that comment because you think that it should be, we should address that through reducing business, moving it to a different business district and reducing that size? Or are you suggesting it's better off in residential? If I'm keeping a tally, where are you on the spectrum of what you're suggesting in that comment? If you want to mind going up to the podium, so we have it recorded, I'd appreciate it.
I don't think I'm suggesting anything. I was just pointing out to the commission that some of the lots are substandard, according to the existing B1 regulations, and would require a variance. Three of them are. One's owned by Hinckley Hills. I don't know about these other two.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Sufficient, thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Perfect. So we have, out of the emails that we've received, two of them spoke today. I believe it's the wife of another one spoke, Doug Mainzer. And then we also have an email from Teresa Brown. I'm happy to read any of those emails to you, or we can enter them into the record, which is what we did with the map amendment last time. All of you, each of you have been providing copies of those emails in advance. So please, if any of you want me to read them into the record, I'm happy to. Otherwise, we'll just enter them into the record, given that this is a public hearing. And I'll just note that the one, the one email is just requesting a delay on this, which we're going to likely do anyway. And then the second one is opposition as well to the rezoning of the B1 to R1.
Well, I would ask that we read her email, since it does seem to complement the two residential comments in a way.
I'm writing regarding the notice that was sent to us several days ago referencing the rezoning of several parcels in Hinckley. I do have some concerns. I live at 1655 Hinckley Hills, and I have lived on this road my entire life, with the exception of five years from 1978 to 1983. We built the home in 1983 and have been here since. While I certainly understand the movement to limit business and industry from moving into Hinckley, I am curious why you would extend the rezoning to a couple of current homeowners that have a B1 general business to R1? Would this not affect their property value? Was this something they requested? How will this affect their use of the property and their resale value? Furthermore, if you are rezoning the entire corner to stave off any retailers from building, why not just restrict the use of the land? I personally don't want to see a gas station or dollar store at the central homes in there either. You see, since we don't have water and they need wells, when you have table, that becomes a potential problem for us currently staffed homes. Additionally, if you try and elevate homes to fit into that flood zone, what type of runoff situation will you create for those of us immediately downstream? Wouldn't you be able to know dollar store? Perhaps include noises required the property when the time came? But on what they have, no, not go-karts, but perhaps an improved putt-putt and eatery, tennis courts, driving range, restaurant, et cetera. I hope the board will consider the voices of the neighbors that have been here for many years, and some, such as myself, a lifetime. Please consider that two of these properties have homeowners, and you're taking away their B1 classification and restricting them from using that property or selling that property with a small business option. I speak as a concerned neighbor. I am unable to attend in person, but I'd like my opinion to be on the record. Most respectfully, Teresa C. Brown, 1655 Hinckley Hills Road, Hinckley, Ohio 44233. So if there are no other public comments, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until November 3rd?
Before, before we go down that road, I would actually like to ask something of the zoning office conditional permit that Buzzard's Cove is currently using.
My understanding is they don't have one.
That's my understanding also.
Correct.
Hey, ma'am, I'm on your board research.
And that's my understanding as well. And if, but if, let me see, because I quickly glanced, but it wasn't that. So we think that they fall within legal non-conforming currently, because they never obtained a conditional use. Furthermore, when they, when they added the restaurant, if you count constitute as that as a new restaurant, as opposed to like, I don't know whether you would say what they had prior to two years ago constituted concession stand-type thing or a restaurant, but certainly, they have a restaurant there now, and they should have come before the zoning department, because they had permitted use. But they just, that also didn't occur, from my understanding.
Where does that lead you? What's your?
That's problematic, yeah. This is where the history of it is actually pretty significant, because if the putt-putt and driving range were added prior to it being a B1 district, and then it's grandfathered, that's one thing. But that's, we need more information.
I'm not sure why. So let's say they are currently illegal use. Since, yes, they can process. So even though, maybe because they're legal non-conforming presently, they can only expand by 10%. Because they need the conditional use, they should be able to come beforehand and expand more than 10%. So I'm not sure what, why that.
Because what I'm, what I'm trying to see is, okay, well, were there any conditions placed on the, on the property when they were first established? What were the expectations set when they actually went into business and started operating? I know that it was operating as a, as a restaurant in the 90s as well, making pizzas and.
operating as a, as a restaurant in the nineties as well, making pizzas and other things as well back then. And then I guess that kind of fell off and then has, has come back in recent years. So I'm just kind of curious what, okay, what is the history of the property?
I'll say, and the section I keep looking at is Section 8.9, which says, "Any lawfully existing use, bad at the time of the establishment, was not classified as a conditional use, but which now, because of the passage of the zoning resolution or amendment that shall be deemed without further action to be a conditional use." So I'm wondering if that section applies here. I'd have to check on that from a legal standpoint, but I would say that that's, might apply here. And so it eventually became a conditional use as a result of that, even though they did not apply for it and go forward through the BZI if it existed prior to.
And that's, again, this is, this goes back to our, was Buzzards Cove there and being utilized prior to the regulations being written? And there's a good possibility, because I know that it was a, it's been an ice cream stand since like the dawn of time. But adding on the exterior of the putt-putt and the, the driving range, that's, so we, I, I think we do, as a commission, need to consider that history as we continue to go down this road.
I'll see what I can.
And that's why I'm asking if we can dig up whatever information we can. That'd be helpful.
Here, but I think Mr. Manley went down this road, and I've also asked what they currently are classified as. But I'll see if I can find anything more in that 1850 to 1980 timeframe, which is when this would all occur.
Does, does, do you, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I might just come up with one of your names.
Would you mind coming to the podium? I just have a couple of questions. Can you please name and address?
Mike Anthony, 1053 Bellas Road.
Okay. So when, do you know when Buzzards Cove became Buzzards Cove? Like when it, when it opened?
As far as I know, it's been an ice cream stand and mini golf and a driving range for 30-plus years. All of those things existed. The restaurant has always been there. When I started utilizing it again, nothing was added. You know, we went through all of our permits, went through all the inspections that were required of us. And so I don't know where, I don't even know where any of this is coming from.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm asking like prior to even 30 years ago, because Buzzards Cove's, like it's a community staple. It's been forever. So do you know anything prior to 30 years? Because the, the zoning code was written well over 30 years ago as well.
See, when my partner's father bought the place, it was a putt-putt course and a tiny ice cream stand. So I don't know prior to that. But this, I think, was 33 or 34 years ago.
It was a very rundown golf, mini golf and an ice cream stand, years before the Buzzard.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just trying to get the, the whole history so that I know what it is we're considering as we're trying to go down this road.
Okay.
So Mr. Marzull, I will attempt to see what, what else we can retrieve. At least, those are old records, but we'll see what we can do.
Go ahead.
Specifically in regards to that, Scott Rushworth, 1006 Bellas, we're across the street from that Buzzard Cove. We've spoken with several of the neighbors who lived there in the area, across from Buzzard Cove and around, where there was at least a two-year window where there was no putt-putt golf and driving range and pizza and ice cream. It was like late eighties, like 87 to 89, sometime in that window when the property was transferred over to another ownership. So we should look into that detail as well.
The other thing, and we had sent an email prior, prior when y'all were first discussing this, that I think we assumed would have applied as well. I didn't hear it in the list of emails that you had talked to for the meeting, but the same comments we made before would apply. And, you know, we do strongly support the rezoning of that corner to residential. It's really not a business district. If you look at the business districts, which to me would be a group of adjoining businesses, you know, downtown, where you've got businesses and businesses and businesses and businesses, and then there's one neighbor, you know, up on 130th, again, you've got a number of businesses all together. This is a single business that's smack in the middle of a residential area. And, you know, looking at the permitted uses for your business zones, a lot of those really aren't harmonious with a residential neighborhood. You know, the, the senior center that, that they were going to put in, there were a lot of people, you know, there's one neighbor really who, who was impacted and a lot of people that were objecting. You know, in this case, you know, you had something like a, a drugstore or senior center or any of those things on the permitted or conditional uses. You don't just have one or two neighbors at the edge of a business district that are impacted. You've got a large number of people going, you know, up behind them, you know, down 606 and across Bellas. What's the road that goes up?
Skyline.
Skyline Drive. You know, there, there's a number of people impacted. It really, to me, isn't a business district. And it makes sense to return it to a residential use where they're allowed to continue the operation that they have, but, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to avail themselves in the future of the myriad of uses that are allowed in a business district. And as we had said in the email, you know, if that's not something that's possible, you know, creating another district that would have a very limited subset of uses so that we don't have to, you know, indoor all of these other possibilities that are really not intended for a residential neighborhood. But our, our preference would be that it's a residential where anything that they wanted to do that would be outside of their current use would have to go through the BZI and adequate controls could be put in place to ensure that all of our, you know, all the neighbors, everybody living in that community, protected from, you know, noise and light and, and traffic and anything else, whatever future use might bring. Thank you.
If you just state your name for the record.
My name's Lisa Rushworth, also 1006 Bellas Road.
The most important thing for us is the noise. We wake up in the morning, the, the music plays 24/7 lately. They leave it on overnight. The lights are on. They put up these string lights all over the place. They're on all day long, all night long. There's more, and they added more around the fence. So the light pollution is ridiculous. But the sound, we wake up in the morning, we go to feed the chickens, there's bumpety bumpety music playing. We go to put them away at night, bumpety bumpety music. We open the door, there's loud music constantly. The speakers, if you walk in the parking lot, you don't hear the music all that much. It's not that loud down there. But they've angled the speakers pointing right up the hill, straight at our house.
And, and as, as Mr. Pearl stated before, you know, it's called Echo Valley for a reason. Whatever business that happens to be in there is going to be echoing around the whole valley. The folks up on Skyline are listening to it, we're listening to it, and.
We've called them, talked to them, asked them, pleaded with them to turn it down, turn it off preferably. And we get, they turn it down a little bit, they turn it right back up. They say, no, we're a business, we can do whatever the F we want. They've called us names and they just hang up phones. It's been terrible dealing with them. They're absolutely unneighborly. As a business, they're not, they're not, they were allowed to be a business in residential area. I assume everybody thought they would be neighborly about it. They're not. There's nothing stopping them from putting in a shooting range or.
Go-karts.
Go-karts. Or any other loud, abusive use that have residential properties next to them.
And as I said, something that might be a lot more sensible in a real business district where you've got a little more of an expectation that, you know, there, there's fosters and another business and another business and another business. And if you happen to have, you know, somebody with a, a shooting range or, or some go-karts or, or some, you know, dance music in the middle of that, it isolates them a little bit from the neighbors that, that are also listening to it.
We've tried everything with them. They haven't helped. They haven't done anything about it. So.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, Chairman Fisher, if I may.
Sure.
So, oh, no, no, please.
Okay.
Didn't see your stuff up there.
No, no problem.
What I'm going to offer you, you're going to have to consider as hearsay. To the, and the reason I offer it and suggest that you consider it hearsay is maybe it will help guide the research that Mr. Marzull was asking for. To my knowledge, in 1950, there was a farm there with the residents and a. And in 52, the first zoning code came into existence. And I think you and I have researched that, and there was no business district there. And I think what Mr. Manley researched was in, in the second revision of the zoning resolution in 56, the business district developed. And what was there was a smaller than this room, perhaps 15 by 15, 20 by 20 seasonally. And then a actual putt-putt course, which is a registered name, came into existence somewhere in the late 50s and went defunct by, by the 70s. And they continued to sell ice cream, but there was not open in the area of 84 to 87. And in 87, I did come to some of the township meetings where they should have been applying, where the owner of Hinckley, the owner of the properties on the corner was asking to expand the ice cream shop. And they made the claim that it had opened at least one day for one hour every year and that it did not go defunct. How you research that, I don't know. But they did not get it. They did not, to my knowledge, they did not apply for a conditional use. Promises were made of what the business would be, and the person who owned the property at that time explained he was a golfer and wanted to put in a driving range. And somehow the zoning and trustees at that time agreed to it, but I don't believe there was any conditional permit given. So again, that's all hearsay. You can talk to Suzanne. Suzanne has some memories of the 1950, perhaps late 49, what was going on there. I guess the other thing I'd like to point out too is, is again, it, it's been a business district apparently since 56, and there has been no other, none of these other six properties have expanded. There's only the Buzzard Cove on one of the three properties that Hinckley Hills owns. The larger 9.7 acre lot. The corner lot is only parking. I guess that is part of the business. And then the next house going north on Hinckley Hills Road.
Sorry, I just want to.
Is where Hinckley Hills, is where Hinckley.
Also on the corner.
Pardon?
The barn is also on the corner parcel.
Yes, that is correct. No, the barn is cut off with a little dog leg.
I'm looking at the, the parcel, that corner parcel, I think.
No, the, the, you'll see.
Right, it's just a very.
The barn is cut off with a dog leg onto the bigger property. There's only parking lot on it. And then the, the house to the north of that corner lot is where Hinckley Hills Properties is registered as a business. So I hope that's helpful. Again, you have to consider it hearsay.
Thank you. Mr. Spelman, did you have something?
I did, I did. Thank you. Hey, just a couple of thoughts here, running through my mind, jotted them down. First off, in my opinion, the dormancy in the eighties is irrelevant to the whole conversation. I have to trust that the process was followed. Hearsay just can't really play any part in our decision. We did, I think, evaluate several different options as we went through this and ultimately landed on the thought to rezone from B1 to R1. I would like to remind the board that as part of that dialogue, we took into account the options that in some cases, I think, almost outright precluded a, a business use from taking place on, on a couple of those parcels. So again, just a statement here, to the, to the two folks that spoke on behalf of having residential, that you spoke about that have residences, that spoke to a, a future business use. First off, I would appreciate that. I don't, you know, it's not something I think I expected to hear tonight. I, I would say that just as a word of caution, having mixed use where you have residential and business on one parcel, especially in a B1, that's going to be a no-no. However, in both cases, the type of business that you described is, I think in one case, actually permitted as a, as a home-based business in residential, and the other, I think, is probably more of a conditional based. But those, the residential or one does have provisions in it for home-based businesses, provided that they're incidental or secondary to the, the primary use, which is kind of a resident. It may not hurt to get a little more information from the zoning inspector on that for your, you know, individual different cases.
The type of business that I am interested in, I am not interested in, I mean, I don't want to rent it out of my home, but I do have two parcels. And the parcel is B1, both of my parcels are B1.
Okay.
At one time, there was, when I was in contact with the zoning commission in Hinckley, that it was permitted to have small business in the full barn on that separate parcel.
Which was a separate parcel. Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. And the portion that Mr. Spelman was referring to, you might want to look at pages 37 through 39, which is the permitted and conditional uses within the residential district. Sure. Pages 37 through 39 pertain to permitted and conditional uses within the R1 district. If you're researching.
37 through 39 of our zoning resolution, which you can find on our website.
It is, what is the title of that?
Page 37 says Section 6R1, Single Family Residential District.
Zoning Resolution. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until November 3rd at 6:30 PM with our regular meeting to follow.
So moved?
Moved by Marzull.
I'll say.
Second by crew, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion has been approved. The public hearing is continued until 6.